Those animals here in this role-playing area. And they actually will get a chance to see themselves on this TV monitor up here and watch themselves be those animals and do those behaviors.
They're having a good time with the video camera. We're here with Dr. Dara at the Cabrillo Marine Aquarium in the aquatic nursery. But I see a sign for aquatic culture kitchen, so can you explain a little bit about what goes on here and what that display is?
Of course. This first display behind me is first intention to catch everyone's attention as they walk in and everyone sees these bright cylinders, they ask us about it. It's a self-sustaining kitchen for all of our baby animals throughout the rest of the room. This is the nursery where we grow all the babies for the aquarium, we share them with other institutions, other aquariums. And this is the first place where we teach kids about plankton, we teach them about small microcultures, and then they get to use that concept around the rest of the room.
Now, your name says nursery, and I understand you have some exciting new additions.
Yes. One of our most popular nursery inhabitants is the seahorse. We have the adult seahorses right here. These are actually the breeding seahorses that we use to make all the babies that we grow here. The babies are born usually every two weeks or so, and when they're born, they're just a little over a centimeter each, thousands of them at a time. And what's exciting is they're born from the male. The male actually gets pregnant and gives birth, and that is one of the lessons we always teach in our school tours. So the kids are just blown away by this, and the chaperones and teachers get a big kick out of it too, actually.
Let's go take a look at the babies.
Sure, they're right around the corner. The babies you see in this tank are from a batch that had about 2,000 babies, and we've got about five or six left right now. And what you can see as you look in the tank are some fake grass. We use the fake grass because it's healthier for the babies than the wild grass. And then the food floating around in the tank for the baby seahorses.
It seems like you're building a reputation here as really having a good facility.
I really hope so. And in fact, with this new space, we're trying to expand the way that Cabrillo is thought of as being a research center as well as just an education center. And as you can see, we're trying to use the research to teach about what is the scientific method and how is it used and how can you become a marine biologist.
So it's way more than just an exhibit of looking at a jellyfish, it's really the whole science behind it.
Absolutely. All you have to do is come in during the public hours and you see the young scientists working in here, and you see that the message is so much more than just a baby animal, it's the whole story of the volunteer who works here on the baby animal. And that's the most important thing really in this room. Come on down to the Cabrillo Marine Aquarium and come ask us about volunteer opportunities. It's welcome for everyone.
That's it for this edition of Portfolio, your behind-the-scenes look at the port of Los Angeles. Thanks for joining us, we'll see you next time.
Bulky item pickup? Call 311, the toll-free number for non-emergency services, 311, your one call to City Hall.
L.A. City View Channel 35, your city, your channel.
This is our third quorum call for councilmembers Alacon, Han, Weezer, Corretts, Krikorian, Parks, Reyes, Smith, and Wesson. It's 10 minutes after the hour. If we fail to get a quorum in the next few minutes, we will adjourn for lack of a quorum. Thank you in the meantime to the public for your patience while we seek those councilmembers. We also are available online through the city's website at lacity.org, where you can also see archived footage of all of our past council meetings. You also can access our meetings through your telephone by calling 213-621-CITY. That's 213-621-CITY. And you can listen in to the council meetings or any of our committee meetings as well. So four ways, live in person, through the city's cable channel, Channel 35, the internet, and also through your telephone. Also available online are all the supporting materials which are available here in person too. That includes all the reports that councilmembers read before voting on the items that are before us, as well as being able to read our agendas and also see past council meetings, discussions of items that are before us. If you'd like to be heard on any of the items that are before us today that have not yet had a public hearing, please fill out a speaker card in the back and hand it to one of the sergeants-at-arms. If you live closer to Van Nuys or San Pedro, please avail yourselves of the remote locations there where you can testify, and we're able to watch you here in council chambers. And any items that have already had a public hearing, you can fill a card out too, but that will require somebody to reopen the public hearing in order for that to be heard. Finally, if you have any items to discuss before us that are not on our agenda but under the jurisdiction of the city, you can also fill out a speaker card for our general public comment section of the meeting. It's about two minutes per speaker, and there is a timer there to help you guide your time. Thank you to councilmembers Cardenas, Han, Labange, Rosendahl, and Zine, who are now here, that is six members. Again, we are awaiting these late councilmembers, Councilmember Alacon, Weezer, Corretts, Krikorian, Parks, Reyes, Smith, and Wesson. Thank you for your patience, we'll wait a couple more minutes, and if we don't have a quorum, we will adjourn for lack of a quorum. Thank you.
It's 10:14, and we are still a few councilmembers short at the side of the times. Will please escort down Mr. Alacon and Mr. Wesson. I know they're in the building. And we don't get them down here in the next minute or so, we will adjourn. We're still also waiting Mr. Weezer, who is late, Mr. Parks, who is late, Mr. Reyes is late, and Mr. Smith, who is late.
This is our third quorum call for councilmembers Alacon, Han, Weezer, Corretts, Krikorian, Parks, Reyes, Smith, and Wesson. It's 10 minutes after the hour. If we fail to get a quorum in the next few minutes, we will adjourn for lack of a quorum. Thank you in the meantime to the public for your patience while we seek those councilmembers. We also are available online through the city's website at lacity.org, where you can also see archived footage of all of our past council meetings. You also can access our meetings through your telephone by calling 213-621-CITY. That's 213-621-CITY. And you can listen in to the council meetings or any of our committee meetings as well. So four ways, live in person, through the city's cable channel, Channel 35, the internet, and also through your telephone. Also available online are all the supporting materials which are available here in person too. That includes all the reports that councilmembers read before voting on the items that are before us, as well as being able to read our agendas and also see past council meetings, discussions of items that are before us. If you'd like to be heard on any of the items that are before us today that have not yet had a public hearing, please fill out a speaker card in the back and hand it to one of the sergeants-at-arms. If you live closer to Van Nuys or San Pedro, please avail yourselves of the remote locations there where you can testify, and we're able to watch you here in council chambers. And any items that have already had a public hearing, you can fill a card out too, but that will require somebody to reopen the public hearing in order for that to be heard. Finally, if you have any items to discuss before us that are not on our agenda but under the jurisdiction of the city, you can also fill out a speaker card for our general public comment section of the meeting. It's about two minutes per speaker, and there is a timer there to help you guide your time. Thank you to councilmembers Cardenas, Han, Labange, Rosendahl, and Zine, who are now here, that is six members. Again, we are awaiting these late councilmembers, Councilmember Alacon, Weezer, Corretts, Krikorian, Parks, Reyes, Smith, and Wesson. Thank you for your patience, we'll wait a couple more minutes, and if we don't have a quorum, we will adjourn for lack of a quorum. Thank you. Just as a point of information, you may see councilmembers and city staffers, local members of the public today wearing jeans. While for many that is a common occurrence, it is less common here in council chambers, and that is because today is denim day, which we will be marking a little bit later in the meeting as one of the official items that is before us to declare denim day here in Los Angeles, a day to raise awareness about sexual assault and sexual violence. And this month is Sexual Assault Awareness Month, and we will be joining with a number of advocates today and discussing that. Thank you to those members who are here, we are waiting. Two more members, councilmembers Alacon, Weezer, Parks, Reyes, Smith, and Wesson. This is our final quorum call, if you'll join us right away. Again, we are awaiting these late councilmembers, Councilmember Alacon, Weezer, Corretts, Krikorian, Parks, Reyes, Smith, and Wesson. Thank you for your patience, we'll wait a couple more minutes, and if we don't have a quorum, we will adjourn for lack of a quorum. Thank you. Just as a point of information, you may see councilmembers and city staffers, local members of the public today wearing jeans. While for many that is a common occurrence, it is less common here in council chambers, and that is because today is denim day, which we will be marking a little bit later in the meeting as one of the official items that is before us to declare denim day here in Los Angeles, a day to raise awareness about sexual assault and sexual violence. And this month is Sexual Assault Awareness Month, and we will be joining with a number of advocates today and discussing that. Thank you to those members who are here, we are waiting. Two more members, councilmembers Alacon, Weezer, Parks, Reyes, Smith, and Wesson. This is our final quorum call, if you'll join us right away. It's 10:14, and we are still a few councilmembers short at the side of the times. Will please escort down Mr. Alacon and Mr. Wesson. I know they're in the building. And we don't get them down here in the next minute or so, we will adjourn. We're still also waiting Mr. Weezer, who is late, Mr. Parks, who is late, Mr. Reyes is late, and Mr. Smith, who is late. Tom, Mr. Labange?
Ms. Millmore, Ms. Millmore, welcome to City Hall.
Colleagues, Mr. Smith has joined us. We are still awaiting Mr. Alacon, Mr. Weezer, Mr. Parks, Mr. Reyes, and Mr. Wesson. I am inclined to adjourn for lack of a quorum right now. We do have denim day presentation which we can do without the quorum, but it is more than 15 minutes past. We could please clear the center aisle and have people sit down. Mr. Dowd, if I could ask you to please sit down? Thank you, sir. Sir, if I could ask you to please stay in order right now and please sit down? Thank you. The sergeants-at-arms have anything to report in terms of Mr. Alacon and Mr. Wesson upstairs? We're still awaiting the following councilmembers, are more than 15 minutes late now, Mr. Weezer, Mr. Parks, and Mr. Reyes. If their staffs have any idea if they're close by, if not, we will adjourn for lack of a quorum. Thank you, Ms. Perry is here, we do have a quorum, please call the roll.
Alacon, Cardenas, Han, Weezer, Corretts, Krikorian, Labange, Parks, Reyes, Smith, and Wesson, ten members present, and a quorum, Mr. President.
All right, first order of business, please.
Approval of the minutes.
All right, Mr. Smith moves and Ms. Perry seconds. If I could please ask folks to keep their conversations to a minimum in the pews, thank you, Mr. Dowd, that'll be the last warning. And next order of business?
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
All right, Mr. Labange moves, and Mr. Krikorian seconds. Next, if we can run through the agenda, please.
First items on the agenda are items for which public hearings have been held. On item number one, there's no action required, and item number two is a public safety committee report.
Okay. Let's go ahead and on item one, if we can go ahead and continue that until Friday. Item two, we have the committee report you said is, we're awaiting it, or we do have?
That is before council.
Okay. Let's go ahead and take up item two then. Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Okay, that is approved. Next items, please.
On item two, please.
Forthwith without objection on two.
Next items are items for which public hearings have not been held, items three through six. Ten votes are required for consideration.
And we do have cards on all of those, we'll call this special for cards from the public, and I'll call five and six special as well. If we can now take up our general public comment, this is for items that are not before us but nevertheless under our jurisdiction. Dr. Clyde Williams, we have two minutes right there on the podium, and Arnold Sacks will follow. Good morning, Dr. Williams.
Good morning, Dr. Clyde Williams, 4115 Barrett Road, El Sereno. Is Councilman Weezer here? Not, not yet. Okay. After yesterday's presentation by the mayor, it seems that we really need to have a scorecard. I thought we were only 200 million in the hole for this year, and now we're 400 in the hole for next year. And how about the next couple of years? We need a scorecard just to keep the numbers straight as to what the current deficit is versus revenues. Can we get a scorecard to show as to what the current deficit is, what it will be on July 1, and any basic assumptions as to what level of services we're going to get with that? I'd also highly recommend that you have the CAO give at least a four-hour, if not all-day workshop so that the people of the city of Los Angeles can find out what he thinks will be the best guess for the next three or four years. Last in January, he gave a very nice presentation. The council was absolutely dead quiet for at least a half hour, and he mentioned the B-word four times. So we're quite concerned about the ongoing deficits, and especially when you start talking about the structural deficit. Every time you add or subtract, it should go onto a scorecard as to how to make it easy for the citizens of Los Angeles to understand the big, big, deep, deep hole that we're in right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Williams. Arnold Sacks is our next speaker. After Mr. Sacks will be Ankor Patel. Good morning, sir.
Good morning, Council, Arnold Sacks. It was revealing news yesterday, listening to the mayor's budget, but you have to wonder who really is in charge here. All this negative publicity, layoffs, layoffs, 4,000 people, 3,000 people, 2,000, job, this, cut, 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 budget constraint. Do you think the bond issuers that the city relies on to help it get through these temporary shortfalls before it gets its revenues from property and the money that it receives in January and April? Do you think they're paying attention when all this negative publicity is announced that they sit around and they say, hmm, maybe L.A. isn't doing so well, maybe we should lower their ratings? What does that cost the public? Does that hit this council in the pocket? Not as much as it hits the public. And then to find out, oh, you know those 4,000 layoffs? Well, they're not really 4,000 layoffs. It's only 700 layoffs. And you know that deficit is not really as bad as it was because we found an extra $30 million. Oh, you know what? Next year's deficit is going to be bad because we don't have the property taxes. Where do we find the $30 million? We got extra property tax. It's this, it's that, it's up, it's down. Who's on first? What's on second? I don't know, third base. You leave a lot to be desired. You go into closed session on all these rinky-dink payouts, but discussing the city's budget problems, you leave out in the open so that every predator, every, ah, what's the word? Every predator is hearing. Everyone knows how bad it is. But it's never not that bad. So when Mr. Alacon says, "I hate the bond issuers," why should he hate them? You're the ones making the policy, do something.
Thank you very much, and I liked the T-shirt, it was a good victory last night for the Lakers. Ankor Patel is our next speaker, after that is Matt Dowd. Good morning, sir.
Hello, my name is Ankor Patel. I took the bus from Chatsworth, I got on there at 7:50 this morning to get here at 10:00. I do take public transportation, I do appreciate the things that you did yesterday. Now, we continue to talk about the problems L.A. has, but let me just mention some of the positives. We have the most diverse city council, I think maybe in the country. We have all races representatives, we have genders, we have, we don't get caught up in religion and petty political issues. Democrats and Republicans at the national level, it is a joke. And in this council, I'm glad to say we don't have to deal with that. We have a more pressing issue though, and that is the budget, right? The budget, right? They don't tell us what's going on. We, as the public, don't have access to this information. I would like access to this information. I've gone through the information that is made public, and it does not hold water. You go into closed session on all these rinky-dink payouts, but discussing the city's budget problems, you leave out in the open, so that every predator, every, ah, what's the word? Every predator is hearing, everyone knows how bad it is, but it's never not that bad. So when Mr. Alacone says, "I hate the bond issuers," why should he hate them? You're the ones making the policy, do something.
Thank you very much, and I like the T-shirt, it was a good victory last night for the Lakers. Ankor Patel is our next speaker, after that is Matt Dowd. Good morning, sir.
Hello, my name is Ankor Patel. I took the bus from Chatsworth, I got on there at 7:50 this morning to get here at 10:00. I do take public transportation, I do appreciate the things that you did yesterday. Now, we continue to talk about the problems LA has, but let me just mention some of the positives. We have the most diverse city council, I think maybe in the country. We have all races representatives, we have genders, we have, we don't get caught up in religion and petty political issues, Democrats and Republicans at the national level, it is a joke. And in this council, I'm glad to say we don't have to deal with that. We have a more pressing issue, though, and that is the budget, right? The budget, right? They don't tell us what's going on, we as the public don't have access to this information. I would like access to this information. I've gone through the information that is made public, and it does not hold water. So now, we need to get the people involved, we need to get the people of Los Angeles involved. They don't know you guys. Most people don't know that there are 18 elected officials in Los Angeles, 18, 15 of you guys are right here. Most people can't name more than one or two. Viragosa, of course, maybe their councilman. But we, as a population of Los Angeles, we don't know you guys. It is important that you get out into your community, get the young people involved. Today, we have a lot of people under the age of 25, but usually, that's only me that's not getting paid to be here, you know? Thank you guys for coming out, by the way. And I think a great tool that is completely underutilized is the neighborhood councils. They, I've been to those meetings, it's a joke, they vote to have, to sign a letter, they vote for 30 minutes, let's write a letter to you guys. Come on, that's pathetic. We can use the neighborhood councils to get a feeling for what the people want. The neighborhood council should be set up in a way where you can ask a simple question. They can go out to the community and answer those questions from the people.
Thank you very much, Mr. Patel. Matt Dowd is our next speaker, after that will be Olga Hall. Good morning.
Yes, thank you. First of all, I'm mad because the city of Los Angeles kiddies, they sent undercover police down to Venice Beach to arrest me, to bust me for selling a CD, playing guitar and performing. If you went out on the beach and you're just playing a flute or whatever, and they sent undercover police down to undercover sting, that's what the city does, but that's not why I'm really mad. If I'm not here at 10 o'clock and put in my public comment card and they start without me, then they'll turn around and say, oh, you weren't here at the beginning, so now it's too late. But let me, now that you're here, I'm so glad, because I want to explain exactly where the city's at, because nobody's going to get up and tell you this, but let me put it this way, have a look around and look at all the police and the city workers, see? And they all had this giant piggy bank, they had this huge piggy bank called the Laser Fund, it was all their pension money. So when they retire, there's an ongoing stream of money for your retirement, so that you don't go broke, and you don't lose your house, and you don't lose everything and end up on Skid Row. But what did they do at the piggy bank? The mayor and the city council approved all these commissioners for the fund, and they put it all into the riskiest affordable housing scams that got ripped off by all the developers with, who took all the money upfront, and then the housing market exploded, and they lost all the piggy bank. The whole piggy bank for the city is gone for the retirement fund. They're $4 billion in debt, get your teachers to tell you how much $4 billion is, they have a structural deficit of $650 million because of the pension loss, so the city's bankrupt, and they're putting you, you, further and further in debt every day, and someone's going to have to say enough and pay for it. And that's why I'm angry, because they're putting you further in debt, they've got hopeless, retarded attorneys.
Thank you, Mr. Dowd. Olga Hall is our next speaker, after that is Wayne Spindler. Good morning, Ms. Hall.
Good morning. Good morning, Mr. President and members of the council. The Southwest Museum is closed, and I repeat, is closed. No one can now deny the intentions of the O3, to steal the Southwest Museum Native American collection that belongs in the Southwest, oh, sorry, in the Southwest Museum building in the northeast area. With it, they are destroying and erasing Charles Loomis' legacy, and stealing the wealth and history of our community. O3 has lied to the community, they have lied to the public, they have lied to their donors, and they have lied to you. They never had intention of honoring the merchant, their word and signature means nothing. They are unethical, they are predators. What is the difference between the O3 and Bernie Mardot with his punks skin? None. They are both liars and thieves. They are predators pretending to come as helpers and then stealing what is not theirs. What the O3 has done all these years is to launch a propaganda that has nothing to do with the true state of the Southwest Museum and the collection. They have lied to all of you. If you are supporting the O3 in any shape or form, remember, you are helping a predator commit a crime. The O3 needs the Southwest Museum collection to survive. The O3 can never acquire the same statue in the museum world than the Southwest Museum without his collection. O3 cannot stand on its own two feet. Please continue helping those of you that have supported us, and thank you to Councilman Weezer for his help. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hall, thank you for your activism on this. Wayne Spindler is our next speaker. Oh yeah, I'm sorry, just a second, Mr. Spindler, Mr. Corcoran?
Excuse me, Mr. President, sorry to interrupt, but just for purposes of an introduction, I'm happy to recognize, as Mr. Labange already recognized, that Ms. Milmore was here, but I also want to recognize the entire Campbell Hall third grade student group who's here, Ms. Milmore and Ms. Carlisle, they're teachers. They're here studying government and visiting us here in the chambers. I want to welcome all of the students from Campbell Hall to Los Angeles City Council.
Thank you, great to have you here. Thank you, Mr. Spindler, for your accommodation. Good morning.
Yes, we have a, we have a new interim general manager of the DWP, the great Austin Butner, was confirmed yesterday by DWP, and I believe there was a benefits and contract package to go on for six months. So now we have a billionaire running a multi-billion dollar DWP. This sounds really good, but we've been hearing some rumblings that perhaps this appointment should be taken up by the council through the similar motion that was taken on the rate hike increase and last Friday's motion to take jurisdiction. I disagree, I think Austin Butner is the right man for the job. He's a billionaire, he's dealing with a multi-billion dollar company. It makes sense to me that somebody from the private sector is going to come in and just turn the whole thing around. And the first thing that Austin Butner should do is go in and lower all of the DWP rates by the .06 percent, because that rate hike that you gave them was supposed to be for three months. However, now we've learned that it is a permanent rate hike. Since this motion was taken up as an emergency one, and since it was given to the DWP as an emergency motion rate hike, Austin Butner should know that that's illegal. And Austin Butner should, as the new head of the DWP, come to the chambers and encourage the council, in fact, demand that the council take jurisdiction over last week's rate hike, revise the numbers, and find that the DWP, in fact, has a surplus of money available, about $73.5 million, because they're not going to give it to the general fund of the city of Los Angeles. Take the 73.5 million, divide it by the rate payers, and accordingly, lower the rates for the next three months. I think that would be a good way to start off Austin Butner's new leadership, and I think that this would encourage businesses to come to Los Angeles. So it should be considered in that way. And finally, there was over $53 million of goodies that the council currently is going to review in the Energy and General Affairs Committee. So all of those spending actions should be overturned, so the new general manager can review those contracts and see if they're appropriate. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Spindler, and just one point of information, that they didn't actually take up our item, they can't legally take up our item, and we can't legally raise the rates, we can only give them advice, so they didn't actually gendize it as a result of any action here, just as a point of information. That closes our general public comment. We will next take up item three, and we have cards from the public on that. Dr. Clyde Williams, if you'd like to come forward on item number three, will be followed by Arnold Sacks.
Dr. Clyde Williams, El Sereno, Northeast LA. Basically, the same thing, need a scorecard. Level of service, current number of positions and costs, proposed, current, I mean, proposed positions and costs. Is this difficult to do? Supposedly not, but I don't know how you guys keep track of it. We have enough problems with DWP, much less the city general fund positions. And, oh, also, what happened to the police and the fire departments? Aren't they still part of the general fund? And when are we going to see a shared sacrifice in the level of service, number of positions, and costs to the taxpayers of Los Angeles? Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Williams. Arnold Sacks is our next speaker, and then Matt Dowd will follow him.
Let's thank you again, Arnold Sacks. Again, the end of the budget cycle, and you're taking actions. These actions refer to the 2009, 2010 budget that you're going to be looking at? When will you take actions on the 2010, 2011 budget? Will you wait until April of next year to decide to sit down and get tough with your pencils? What are you doing exactly now that couldn't have been done last year? Why are these excuses rolled out for these layoff lists, these transfer job positions, these on-open this, positions that are budgeted but not filled? What exactly does that mean, when you budget it for a position but you don't fill it? At the end of the year, what happens with that money? Does that just like, well, we budgeted for a position, but we didn't fill it? What is that, what is that in reference to public service? Is that, does that mean, well, we were paying for the position, but we didn't have somebody to help you out when you went to get your permits, so that's why you had to wait an extra hour? Please, generalize that for the public's opinion, you know? You have different accounts, different numbers, different letters. Public comes in, they believe you supposedly, and then you get results like yesterday when the mayors gave a speech, 4,000 layoffs, oh, wait, no, 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 700 layoffs. That's only, that's only a difference of 3,300 people. You think the voters got happy hearing that? But people, again, with their bond issuing, the CAO is here, how does he even think that that handles with the bonds ratings for the city when it wants to borrow money? It's great news that you have here, you're doing a wonderful job.
Thank you. I think you, just as, also as a point of information, maybe that they're authorized, but that they weren't filled, which doesn't mean there's money in there, it just means they're authorized positions, when they get swept, that means that they disappear, and that's what part of the savings of the 4,000 eliminations, not layoffs, would be. Matt Dowd is our next speaker, and then Wayne Spindler will follow him.
All right, Channel 35, City of Los Angeles, this is the item we've been waiting for. Tune in, set the VCR so you don't miss it. These are the specific layoff plans from all the departmental general managers, numbers and titles of positions to be eliminated. And, see, and then the reductions in the services that we warned about, I mean, they could have just taken our public comment off of Channel 35 and written this language here. You know, like, positions to be eliminated as a result of the reduction, and the reductions in services and other impacts to residents that we warned about since 2007. In 2007, we were here jumping up and down, and you, and council president, the city council, you're all, oh, we don't like the way you're jumping up and down, oh, your voice is too loud. No, we're warning the city of Los Angeles how you're going into this huge hole, and you're going to have to fire everyone in the city. And what's the date today? Oh, yes, 4/21/2010, and we're firing everybody in the city. So watch this item, Channel 35, City of Los Angeles. We were right, because here it is, let's have a councilman get up and say, I was wrong, that you're going to have to fire everyone, because you're going in a huge hole, because you lost all the pension money, because your eyes were too busy on Zuma Dog, and what he was wearing, and what he was jumping up and down, and whether he was singing Whitney Houston out of key. And I'm serious, it's not a joke, unfortunately. This city is about to lay out the specific plans to fire everybody. So if you work for the city of Los Angeles, you do business with the city of Los Angeles, check out this item. Matt Dowd, thank you.
Thank you. Wayne Spindler is our next speaker on item number three.
Well, at last, finally, the fun is about to begin. We know who's going to be lined up at the guillotine, the heads are going to start to roll now, the layoffs are here, and everybody's been warning you, but it's finally going to happen. No more taking employees and shipping them out to DWP like they did with the tree trimmers, they took the city's tree trimmers and made them into DWP tree trimmers, and clerks that were made into DWP clerks, no more, because Austin Butner's here, he's running the DWP, he's a private sector guy, and he knows you don't take on dead weight. So what's going to happen is that a lot of people who are never thought in their lives are going to be laid off, are going to be laid off, they're going to be fired. And the reason that's going to happen is because we have a $4 billion budget for a city that's hemorrhaging jobs. And also, we're hemorrhaging talent. There are many people that work in the federal sector that make the same salary if they live in Los Angeles or Nevada or anywhere else. And they're moving because they're going to take their money somewhere else where they don't have to pay state income taxes, and where they don't, like in Oregon, you don't have to pay sales tax. We have a brain drain going on, we have a talent drain going on, and the worst part is the LAPD. Every time an officer retires, and you have to hire a replacement officer, you have two salaries. You have 85% of the old officer's pension that you're going to have to pay, plus you have to train the new officer and pay his salary. We can't keep doing this to ourselves and let people retire at the age of 55. It's coming, it's here, so let's find out how many people lose their jobs. Thank you.
Receive and file on that, Madam Clerk, Mr. Wesson.
Mr. President, before we go on to the next item, I apologize for being late, the committee ran long, but we have some students from LA City College visiting us, they're with the African-American Studies Program, they're in the back of the council chambers, if we could give them a round of applause.
Please stand, take a bow. Thank you. Stand up, we'll get you on camera. Thank you very much, congratulations, and thanks for being here. Thank you, Mr. Wesson. Next item, how about number five, please?
And that was called special for Mr. Garcia, and I believe there are cards as well, I believe you want to do, do you want, wish to do the presentation first?
Let's do the cards first, we only have one card on each. Matt Dowd on number five. Matt Dowd? Matt Dowd still here? Yeah, we're going to do five and six together. Matt Dowd's not here. Matt Dowd is not here on five and six. Matt Dowd, Mr. Garcia. For the record, the public comment on that, five and six is over, thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Garcia. Mr. Stein, you have your microphone turned up nicely. Good morning, ladies and gentlemen, and thank you all very much. I think, I don't know if councilmembers, if folks can see in the audience, but councilmembers today and our staffs, and so many Angelenos, Californians, Americans, and people around the world are wearing jeans today, because we wear jeans on this day to communicate the message that there is no excuse and never an invitation to rape. April is Sexual Assault Awareness Month here in Los Angeles, and we're joined by some of the top advocates, not only here in Los Angeles, but around the world. Patty Giggins is here from Peace Over Violence, as much as any organization in the world has helped promote Denim Day, as a moment which we pause to recognize that sexual assaults happen still every single day in our city, in our state, in our country, and in this world, and that to raise awareness is to not only make sure that survivors have the justice that they deserve, but that we can prevent sexual assault from occurring in our midst as well. The United States government has declared this month as Sexual Assault Awareness Month, and Peace Over Violence has declared April 21st, 2010, with this council and our mayor, as Denim Day in the city and county of Los Angeles. And both events are intended to draw attention to the fact that rape and sexual And both events are intended to draw attention to the fact that rape and sexual assault remain a serious issue in our society. Harmful attitudes about rape and sexual assault allow these crimes to persist and allow survivors to be revictimized. Sexual Assault Awareness Month and Denim Day were also instituted to bring attention to misconceptions. We have to retell the story each year because it's important, the case in which an Italian judge overturned a rape conviction because he said the survivor was wearing jeans and she couldn't have been an unwilling victim to a rape. These sorts of attitudes, the problem that so many in society remain disturbingly uninformed with respect to issues of assault and rape, is why we are here today. I'll never forget, the first year I wore jeans, we get calls to our office about all sorts of things from constituents, and a constituent called our front desk and said, "Why is my council member wearing jeans? That's bad protocol, I want him to be in a suit." And it allowed my receptionist to have a conversation about sexual assault, to raise awareness with this individual about Denim Day, and by the end, she said, "Well, I'm going to tell," she was a teacher, "I'm going to tell everybody at my school and implement Denim Day in my school, and tell Mr. Garcetti to keep wearing those jeans on Denim Day." Every two minutes, somebody in America is sexually assaulted. Approximately 1 in 6 women are raped during their lifetime, and youths under 18 account for about 44% of all reported rapes. With proper education on the matter, there's compelling evidence that we can be the difference, that we can be successful in reducing incidence of this alarming and psychologically damaging crime. So the members of the City Council today join with you, the advocates, the efforts of Peace Over Violence, Just Detention International, who is here with us as well, which does extraordinary work to finally eliminate rape in our prisons and our criminal justice system, which has been declared as a national goal now in this country as well. And I want to personally thank Patty Giggins again, our Peace Over Violence angel. To quote Tom LeBarnes, "A true angel in the city of angels," for your excellent leadership throughout the years, and it's great that you are so close to us now just over the freeway. And I invite folks to go see their new headquarters and help them get started with that as well. So today, the City of Los Angeles declares the month of April 2010 a Sexual Assault Awareness Month, designates April 21, 2010 as Denim Day. We'll be giving this, as we do each year, to the advocates, but I know Ms. Perry and Ms. Hahn are going to also add some thoughts and some questions, but I want to thank you all for all that you do, and let's all make that commitment to making sure that Denim Day is the day that we are reminded of the work that we have to do 365 days of the year. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. Ms. Perry.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, and I also want to say thank you to Patty and her team, and it's a pleasure to be able to stand up for you today in honoring Peace Over Violence and again highlighting Denim Day in Los Angeles. And, you know, I know you had a rally, and we were in council all night long, but I'm glad that we're able to have this chance to get together again and to highlight for the people watching and listening that this is an important campaign against rape and sexual assault and developing greater awareness. More than that, it dispels the myths surrounding rape, and many of the folks here today are wearing the denim, and I hope that by doing that, it will cause people to talk to their friends and their neighbors about the realities of sexual assault, because it's really not about what you wear or what you say. It's something that can happen to anyone, and I know that we have joined together today, but I think that we should join together every day to continue to unite and raise awareness on this cause. And thank you, Patty, for your devotion and your passion and your service and your just deep commitment to not giving up and continuing to forge ahead. I think we have made great strides and great progress, and you have shown not only the city, but our country that this is a problem that touches us all. So thank you very much.
Patty, it's many, many years, and you're still there fighting the battle. Councilmember Hahn, please.
Thank you. Happy to stand today with my colleagues, President Garcetti, Councilmember Perry, and just to thank everyone here today for continuing this tradition of Denim Day in Los Angeles. As was already said, this is always an important day, because we can never forget the original case, and it happened in Italy. Eric Garcetti talked about it, but a rape conviction was overturned because the judge noticed that the victim in the case was wearing a pair of jeans, and he assumed that she would have had to cooperate with her assailant for that to happen. And it was such an outrage to women, first in Italy and then really came to this country, and now I think it's a worldwide awareness of what miscarriage of justice that was. And, you know, women, I think, still have to always fight back that perception that in some way it was brought on, in some way a woman cooperated, in some way it was a woman's fault that the rape occurred. And I'm proud of Los Angeles for doing this. I love wearing my denim on this day for the same reason. I love people asking, "Why are you wearing jeans? Why are you wearing denim?" And it's an opportunity to retell the story and bring awareness. And as was said by Ms. Perry, it's still a problem, it's still something that we have to talk about, we have to get out in the open, and we have to keep people strong in the feeling that it is our bodies, our domain, we have the right to say no, and we have the right to not be assaulted in this way. And I want to thank Patricia Giggins, Executive Director of our Commission on Assaults Against Women, which is now called Peace Over Violence, who was responsible for bringing Denim Day to Los Angeles, and because of her, this event is now a statewide event as well. And I want to call on Patricia, as well as Louisa Stanow, the Executive Director of Just Detention International, an organization dedicated to stopping sexual assault in prison. And I believe also we're going to invite Troy, a survivor who works with that organization, and I'd like to invite you forward to speak at this time, if you'd like to come sit at this table. But thank you, everyone, for doing this. Thanks for everyone who participates in doing this. It's a good message that Los Angeles takes at least this one day and brings awareness to this problem worldwide. Thank you.
Mr. Rosendahl.
I'll wait until after their presentation.
All right, Patty, please proceed.
Thank you so much. Once again, it's our honor to be invited here to present this testimony on this, which has now become an historic day. Progress has been made in moving the issue of sexual violence out of the shadows, yet it is still a crime and a trauma shrouded in silence. All too often, it is too difficult or too uncomfortable to talk about rape in all its forms, molestation, child abuse, teen dating violence. Rape remains the subject we most often want to turn away from, even though it affects so many segments of our communities and families. This is the 11th annual Denim Day in L.A. The goals of Denim Day is to support survivors and prevent sexual violence. The support of this city council, the mayor, our city attorney, the controller, and all the city departments have been essential in bringing this issue forward in our city. Los Angeles is taking a leadership role and is the flagship for Denim Days all over the country. Denim Day USA is spreading. Now there is, for the first time, the first annual Denim Day, New York City. There are Denim Days in the U.S. Navy, in the U.S. Air Force, Denim Day California on the steps of the Capitol in Sacramento as we speak here. The Los Angeles School District has declared Denim Day in L.A. USD, and the homies at Homeboy Industry are signing a Sexual Violence Prevention pledge. Over, somewhere between a million and 2 million people will wear jeans on purpose this day and participate in trainings, discussions, and chats around the water cooler and the quad, and yes, even Twitter about Denim Day. What does this signify? Courage. The courage to confront a difficult pervasive issue, to take on educating ourselves and each other until we promote a cultural shift, to someday achieve a culture where rape jokes are not laughed at, where it's not okay to rape a prostitute, not okay to be raped in jail or prison, where the most vulnerable are not preyed upon, where if a boy or a man has been violated, there would be no shame to tell, where girls and women don't have to shape-shift their lives to cope with a constant underlying fear, where so many live lives informed by trauma that never gets attended to. Peace Over Violence's award-winning No Excuses campaign teaches that there is no excuse and never an invitation to rape. There is no excuse, number one, she was wearing tight jeans. This excuse was the inspiration for Denim Day in L.A. after the Italian Supreme Court in 1999 overturned a lower court's rape conviction. There's no excuse, number two, she was asking for it. Wearing sexy or suggestive or fashionable clothing is not an invitation to be raped, to be looked at maybe, to be admired, to be asked to go out on a date, but not rape. There's no excuse, number five, she was drunk and partying. A common belief that if a woman is drinking, she is inviting rape. It is illegal to coerce or force or steal sex from someone who is unable to give consent. Excuse number 10, she cannot hear or talk. People who are deaf or disabled are violated twice that of the general population. No excuse. There is no excuse. Rape is not part of the sentence. Each year, over 100,000 male and female prisoners are sexually abused and brutally raped behind bars by other inmates and by correctional staff. This month, throughout Sexual Assault Awareness Month, our policy focus is to support the adoption of the standard set forth in the Federal Prison Rape Elimination Act, which you will hear more about shortly. By standard education is a big part of the educational and informational component of our approach. We are encouraging parents to talk to their teens, both the boys and the girls, about sexual violence, teen dating violence, and to discuss healthy, respectful relationships. There is no excuse not to. The majority of victims are between the ages of 12 and 24, and so are the majority of violators. We encourage all adults, teachers, and parents to become educated. We invite everyone to go to our website, www.denimdayinla.org, and review and study the materials and curricula online, and then share that information. Break down the myths, the excuses, the mistaking thinking that still persists. Make the shift from a culture that has practices that support rape to a culture that defeats rape. Until that culture shift happens, we must all do, we must do all we can to support survivors, to support the healing. There is no excuse not to. As daunting as this issue is, we are making progress. The backlog of rape kits that persisted for so long is shrinking, and the LAPD takes this task very seriously. It is an area of policy and practice that requires all of our support and due diligence and vigilance to make sure that there never will be another backlog, and that the Rape Victims Bill of Rights will be honored. We must ensure that DNA rape kit analysis will continue to be viewed as a public safety issue. Thank you very much for inviting us and hearing this testimony and for all your support. I have brought some very special people to join today. I want to introduce an authentic voice.
Patty, hold on a second. Ms. Hahn?
I just want to make sure, you talked about LAPD and how they're supporting this. I think it's really appropriate. Our chief, Charles Beck, is here wearing jeans. I was hoping maybe, Charlie, you could say something. Would you like to say a few words?
And Commander Don is also wearing jeans. The command staff of the LAPD is promptly retired.
I think that speaks volume, that our chief of police is actually here today, is wearing jeans. And before we move on, I just thought we'd give him an opportunity to address us briefly.
No longer than two minutes, so. The chief will give you as much time as you want.
No, you know, I just want to echo the department's support for stopping violence against women, and we could not do that without the help of our advocacy groups. They've been so tremendous in allowing us to continue our DART teams, our SAFE program, and, you know, most dearest to my heart, of course, the elimination of a rape kit backlog. So I really thank you for your partnership, I thank you for your dedication. You know, this is, this is one day, but really, this is a job that we all have to do every day. Violence against women, violence against anybody, is wrong, and it is only by standing together that we can prevent that. So I thank the council for allowing me to speak, and I thank my partners at the table for allowing me to do my job.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you. Patty, continue, please.
Yes, I want to introduce an authentic voice and a very brave person, Helena.
In 1996, days after my 17th birthday, at a self-service car wash practically in view of my home, a stranger approached and forced me into my car at knife point, instructed me to drive to several locations, and repeatedly assaulted me. After being violated, humiliated, and held captive for hours, I convinced him to let me free. He took my license so he'd know where I lived. One last time, he promised that if I reported the crime, he'd be in my house by the time I got home, and everyone there would be dead. I flagged down a cruiser and was taken to the hospital to have my rape kit performed and provide interviews to police. I endured the probing and swabbing, because that's what I was supposed to do. The evidence from the rape kit was my only hope to find my assailant, but no further contact was initiated by the Los Angeles Sheriff's Department, and they did not return my calls for over 13 years. Those 13 years, I lived in fear each day. Every stranger was a potential rapist. Every trip to the store was an invitation for assault. Worst of all, every night in my home was the night of his return. I imagined waking up to a slain family and that man sitting at our kitchen table, waiting to have his breakfast served. In my dreams, he could fly, breathe underwater, read my thoughts. He possessed superhuman powers. There was no corner of the world where I would be safe. This past winter, looking for closure, I began researching destroyed and unprocessed rape kits in Los Angeles. I was forever changed to discover that thousands of women in my city suffered the same silent devastation. It seemed impossible that women had been raped, even murdered, by criminals who could have been in jail if the evidence we suffered to provide had been processed. I enlisted the support of Peace Over Violence in finding out the fate of my kit, and immediately a sergeant contacted me. Within one week, it was revealed that my assailant could have been arrested as early as 1998 if my kit had been analyzed. Instead, he was free, free to commit an identical crime in Ohio, where he abducted and repeatedly raped a woman leaving a grocery store. He's currently serving a 25-year sentence for this crime. Most of my statutes have expired, but he can still be charged with the abduction, which carries a 25-year-to-life sentence. That's what my detectives are working with the DA to achieve. Knowing his name, that he's in a place where he is no longer a danger, gives me a sense of security that I haven't felt in over a decade. My fear has now been replaced by outrage, outrage that this is such a pervasive problem that so many victims sleep without peace, that there is a woman in Ohio who should have just walked out of that grocery store and returned home in 1998, but was instead forever changed, and wondering, "How many like her must there be?" Thank you.
Patty, continue.
Yes, yes, I want to continue. And now I'd like to turn the microphone over to Louisa Stanow, the Executive Director of Just Detention International, and she will introduce Troy, another authentic voice and very brave person.
Thank you, Patty. Thank you to the whole city council for allowing us to speak here today, and especially thank you to Helena for your incredible courage in speaking out and telling your story. I'm so pleased to be here and truly grateful that the city council has decided to let us highlight what Just Detention International considers one of the most widespread and neglected human rights crises in the U.S. today, and that is the sexual abuse of detainees. As Patty already mentioned, every year, well over 100,000 men, women, and children behind bars are sexually abused, and sadly, kids are at especially high risk. A recent federal government survey found that 1 in 8 detained children had been sexually abused in the preceding 12 months, and even worse, 80% of them had been abused by staff. They had been abused by the very corrections officials, whose job it is to help troubled kids turn their lives around, and whose job it is to keep them safe. So you might expect that when faced with that kind of data, corrections officials and government officials in general would uniformly react with horror. Some have done precisely that and taken the right steps. Others, however, including some very prominent corrections associations and leaders, are instead trying to block reform at this stage. Last June, a bipartisan federal commission, the National Prison Rape Elimination Commission, issued a set of national standards aimed specifically at preventing and addressing sexual abuse in all forms of detention. sexual abuse in all forms of detention. These standards are—excuse me—basic and straightforward, and we really need them. Unfortunately, they're now bogged down in a U.S. Department of Justice review, and the reason for the delay is that prison officials claim that the standards will be too cumbersome and too expensive to implement. They claim that it will be too expensive to prevent staff from raping detainees. That's all a bit grim, and—but there is good news as well, and it's always good when there's good news. Prisoner rape, contrary to many of the stereotypes that we see in movies and—and hear from various pop culture sources, is not inevitable. It's very much preventable, and we know how to stop it. The national standards that are currently pending approval on the U.S. Attorney General's desk consist of exactly the kinds of policies and practices that we need. We need political courage, of course, in order to stop prisoner rape. We need prison management that has the courage to establish and enforce a zero-tolerance policy to sexual abuse, and we need the right everyday practices at the prison level. These standards would be the biggest step so far towards ending sexual abuse in detention. And the second piece of good news is that these standards are currently open for public comment. Until May 10th, the Department of Justice will accept any public input on the recommended standards that were issued last June, and this is really an opportunity for all of us, hopefully for—the—for the city council as well, to weigh in, to refuse to be silenced by those who are defending the status quo, who are resistant to change, and to instead demand that these standards be put in place and used fully. And I want to—with that said, pass—hand over to Troy. He is one of those who's done precisely that. He's refused to be silenced, and he has decided to weigh in and speak out. Troy.
Good morning, and thank you, Mr. President and members of the city council, for letting me speak here today. I am 36 years old. I have spent the most of the past 24 years in California correctional facilities. I can't tell you how pleased I am that you are highlighting the most invisible of all sexual abuse, the rape of inmates during this year's Denim Day. I first went into a juvenile facility when I was 12 years old. I was sent to Central Juvenile Hall, where staff and inmates began to harass me. After a couple of days, one boy forced me to oral copulate him in the shower area, and that was just the beginning of my ordeal. I didn't know what to do. I was scared to tell anyone because I didn't know if I would get killed or beaten up. I didn't know if staff members would take me seriously. No one informed me that this was how the facility ran. I realized I need to figure out what to do to keep myself safe. Guards knew what was happening and looked the other way. I was too afraid to fight back, so I started telling staff members that I was suicidal. I would cut on my wrist, anything to get into isolation. I found myself in situations I could not handle. People would take advantage of me, and I just didn't know how to get help. Being attacked and not receiving support from the adults in charge turned my world upside down. It's a traumatizing experience for someone who is young. I take that with me wherever I go. This trauma set me into a cycle of imprisonment. I kept being sent to juvenile hall and later to prisons, where I continued to be assaulted and abused. I have spent most of my life in prison, never for anything violent, but when I was released two years ago, I committed to staying out of prison for good. I am now the president of Hands-on Advocacy Group, based in Los Angeles, a not-for-profit that provides crisis support, and I talk with young people about my experience and what they can learn from it. When I was first locked up, when I was first raped, I was a terrified 12-year-old boy. I'd never been—I've never been violent. I was never different. Um, oh, I'm sorry, excuse me. And I was different. I was skinny and effeminate. Everything about me made clear that I was likely target, but the guards never considered my vulnerability in deciding where to house me. Never was I provided with the protection that I clearly needed. Despite everything that happened to me, I am hopeful. Sexual abuse in detention is a huge problem, but at least now, people are talking about it. You're allowing me to tell my story here today. A bipartisan government commission has developed national standards aimed at ending prisoner rape. This is a fight we are going to win. Thank you again for allowing me to share my story.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you very much for your courage in standing up here. About nine years ago, I went and toured the county jail. Lee Baca is a friend of mine, and I walked around and I saw with my own eyes situations. And the bottom line is this: when they put people in prison, the normal sexual traditions and rules are thrown out the door. It's called prison sex. And the more powerful person in a particular bunk area has opportunities that one would never allow anywhere else. I turned to Lee and I said, "What are we going to do about it?" He did a couple of things, and I admire him for this. And he provided condoms, at least, so that there wouldn't be the spread of HIV, which then goes back to women of color as those men go back into the streets and forget what happens in there, but they carry these diseases. So Lee Baca is a forward-looking visionary guy, but it has never left my mind. Being an openly gay guy, I know about gay rape, and I hear it all the time, and it's one of those acceptable things. And even killing gay people in prison happens every day in this country. They single out a guy and they kill him, and the guards, in part, sometimes participate in that situation. So not only are women raped—and I've got to tell you, I appreciate what you say, it's very emotional, and it showed courage on your part—but I wear these jeans for all of humanity that is abused, all of humanity that is not respected, all of humanity that is treated as second-class. So God bless you all for doing this, and thank you, Mr. President, for bringing it back to our attention today. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl. Mr. Kurec.
Thank you. I just want to say, there—are those that claim this doesn't happen to the degree that it does, but I think the proof is in the rate of HIV among folks that are in prison. I did some work on this when I was in the state legislature, and it's estimated, give or take a—a—a—a time or two, that it's roughly 10 times the general population in terms of the rate of HIV in the prison population. Of course, people then get out, they don't admit that they've been raped, that they've had sex in prison, and then give it to their spouses and girlfriends and boyfriends and whatever when they get out, and it—it has a disastrous impact upon society. One of the solutions to that piece, of course, is allowing condoms in prison, but the real solution is to get a handle on-on the situation of rape in prison and to make it stop. And it seems like there's never been the political will and the governmental will to make that happen anywhere, and I—I agree. It could—it could be done if anyone cared enough. I think part of the problem is that when people are in prison, the general population doesn't care about you anymore. They figure you're there, you deserve whatever you get, and that attitude has to change. So I appreciate what—you're doing here and whatever we can do to help. I think we're all on board with that as a city.
Thank you, Mr. Kurec. And Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you, colleagues. I also just wanted to bring to folks' attention—well, first of all, sorry. Thank you all for being here. Thank you for your courage, despite the adversity where there's so many reasons that you could not be here. You are here as living testament to the strength of who you are as individuals and the strength to us—of us collectively as human beings. Mr. Smith and I and Controller Wendy Gruel were in Washington, D.C. recently, and we went and had a number of meetings on DNA kits and trying to reduce the number of steps it takes so that we don't create a secondary backlog on the kits now that we're finally making headway in the—the primary backlog. And we introduced a motion as well today. We met with the Department of Justice. We—we share some of the same frustrations, whether it's with FBI or Justice, on sometimes how slow they can move, but we're seeing some really good movement from the FBI now on the issue. But we introduced a motion as well today on a survivor's bill of rights, something that we would work on that would be a standard protocol, where somebody who is the survivor of a crime like this would—would have certain guarantees of when does a kit get processed, what sort of protocols should we have in place. And the Department of Justice was very excited to hear about that and perhaps—you—perhaps use that as a template for something nationwide that they could introduce in Congress as well. So we're going to be working on that, working closely with you all to develop that, to make sure that it really has those things that survivors need and want and have not received, and then moving forward, see if we can establish that here in the city, if that can be something that can ripple out forth—from Los Angeles, just as Denim Day has as well. So congratulations on all the progress you guys are making, and it's—it's our honor to be with you today. Thank you.
A quick comment. The Victims' Rights DNA Bill of Rights existing in California. And are—and you're talking about taking it as a model for the country?
Protocol of what cities would then be obligated in terms of some timelines, so that is—you know, not just that it would be done in a timely manner, but that we—
We need to put that—we need to put the muscle in that bill, absolutely. That's—we—we totally want to work with you on that.
Patty, any closing comments?
Um, oh, I just want to appreciate, in particular, Troy and Helena and also Luisa. I mean, Just Detention International has really begun to expose, as Troy mentioned, the most silent—the most silent of sexual abuse. And it's—you know, some of the tough stories that we have to come and bring to you are pretty graphic, and we do that on purpose, because people don't understand what it is that we're really talking about, and we—we really have to describe it, and I just so appreciate the survivors who come—come forward. And again, thank you so much for supporting and being—and for L.A. being a flagship on this issue for the country. Thank you.
Thank you, Patty, and thank you. Members of Matters now before us, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Very well, thank you. Pardon, Mr. Garcetti? I don't four. Madam Clerk, number four, please.
Uh, yes, and that was called special for cards, Mr. President.
We have a card from Arnold Sachs. Arnold Sachs.
Called this for a couple of reasons. Questioning, um, is transfer—excuse me, transferring this new policy from effective October 1st, 2009 through September 30th, 2011. So I was wondering if there had been a grant to encourage arrest policies, a 2007 grant for—to encourage arrest policy from—that would have taken effect from October 1st, 2007 to—through September 30th, 2009. Why the need for a new interest-bearing fund? Why there is a professional service agreement with EMC Corporation for a term up to 24 months, not a term of 24 months, for $630,000? Why you have the contractual services for the nonprofit lifted—it listed at $190,000? The contractual services for EMC, which must be a for-profit, at $630,000? If there is a request for proposals for this professional service contract, was that submitted by the, um, the required parties? You have a, um, portion of this that says, "A negotiated and executed professional service agreement with victim services agencies through a request for proposal for $40,000." Just exactly how many agencies do you expect to divvy up $40,000? And what will they get if you have four agencies that send $10,000? That won't cover postage. It's just amazing how you managed to squeeze out $630,000 for a professional contract without agreements. It's a sole-source contract, and it just doesn't make no sense at all.
Matt Dowd? Matt Dowd? Matt Dowd's not here. Wayne Spindler? Wayne Spindler? Mr. Patel, just be patient, you're after him.
Well, we have another million dollars of goodie money coming into this city's horseshoe again. Dividing up this money, a million dollars, it's a lot of money. And let's look at some of the lucky winners of today's lottery. We've got a professional service agreement, $630,152. Another professional service agreement, $150,800. Are there competitive bids on those? No. They're just friends of the city council listed on another motion. And you know, it's interesting, the same thing you're doing here today, Jan Perry took jurisdiction over last Friday for the DWP. They did the same thing. They—they listed who they wanted to give the money to, but this council found that fiscally imprudent. And yet, here you are, a million dollars, just give it away. How about travel? $825. Well, that doesn't buy you a lot of airline tickets. Salaries grant reimbursed, $19,482. But we have more travel for $13,000. Supplies, $107,300. Is that for copy paper or maybe toner? How about pencils? What are—we—what are we spending $107,000 for—for supplies? You want to help with people? We have a rape kit backlog. You could take that entire million dollars and give it to the LAPD and let them give that directly to that rape kit backlog. That's what you do with that million dollars, and that's the intention of what those grant programs are for. You heard the testimony here. Give the million dollars to the rape kit backlog. Thank you.
Agger Patel.
I was born in the Northridge Hospital. Awareness, right? It's a very important issue, and let me just mention again, April is Sexual Violence Awareness Month. And we talk about awareness. What do we do once we're aware? We have to have an actionable plan. We talk about these rape kits. Very actionable plan. We can make sure that these get processed. We can talk about the rights that these people have access to. And again, these types of things take political courage. We can talk about awareness about climate change. We can talk about awareness of genocide in Darfur. We can talk about awareness of a lot of issues. We can talk about awareness of the fiscal responsibility, the sustainability of this city, right? This is not a sustainable city in many ways, in terms of infrastructure, energy, budget. It's not a sustainable way. We're aware of this, and we need actionable plans, right? We need things that we can action— And so now we look at this. They're going to create a bunch of new funds, accounts, that the mayor and his people and whoever will have access to. I'm not against creating these funds, right? But they need to have the scrutiny that we've been talking about. We, as a people, need to be able to check who's taking out money and where this money's being spent. Now, approve these, fine, but then we should be able to see who is spending this money on what specifically. This should be public information. This is a public tax notice. I want to be able to follow my money. I want to see it go to rape kits. I want to see it being used on positive things. I don't want to see it lining pockets. Now, I understand that we are not going to get to the LADWB's budget. We're not going to be able to take back money that's already lining the pockets of corrupt officials. We're not going to be able to get that money back. I understand that. But let's put into a—let's put a system in place that allows us to follow the dollar from taxpayer to end user. Let's make sure we can figure out where this money is going. I think that is the most important thing about the budget. And again, Awareness Month, be aware of the things that are going around in this world.
Thank you, Mr. Patel. And Mr. Smith?
Just to answer some of those questions, and I understand the interest of people in what the money's used for. To the question that the gentleman asked about, why aren't you using it for rape kits? Why aren't you using it for this? Why aren't you—please— We apply for federal grants. They write the parameters, and they tell us what we can use the money for. We can't take this money and use it for rape kits. We cannot take this money and use it for overtime. We can't take it, use it for libraries. It is for a very specific purpose defined by the federal government. As for openness, we review all those things in our committees. You're entitled to come to those committee meetings. The Budget Committee will review anything that has money expenditures. My Public Safety Committee meets on Monday morning, and it goes over these grants as well. So you're entitled to see that. It's a federal grant. Those documents are open to the public. Anybody can see them anytime they want. You have the freedom of information right. You can request it from the mayor's office. So everything that you saw here is defined by the federal government. We follow those rules. We get those grants. This is a continuing grant, and the continuing cost factors that have all been used in the years past as we run that grant.
Thank you very much, Mr. Smith. With that, let's go ahead and open the roll. Sorry, we can't—we only have one—one time to speak. Sorry. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
That is—
Fourteen ayes.
That is approved. Next order of business, please.
Council has motions for posting and referral.
As opposed and referred.
Excuses on the desk, council members. I request speaks used Tuesday, April 27th, for city business. That meets council policy.
And he is excused.
And Councilmember Perry has speaks used Tuesday, May 11th, to leave at 11:00. Friday, June 11th, and Wednesday, June 23rd, to leave at 11:45, and for city business, and those meet council policy.
Okay, she's excused.
And clears the desk.
Colleagues, I wanted to make an announcement. I want to take a moment to congratulate one of the women who is in Denim here today, Jan Perry, who was honored by the National Association of Clean Water Agencies in Washington, D.C. It's an advocacy group that represents all water and wastewater utilities around the country, but she received the 2010 NACWA National Environmental Achievement Award in the environmental category, developing the nine-acre South L.A. Wetland Park in the Ninth District. It shows that what we're doing here in L.A. has great national significance, and it makes us all proud to be your colleague. Congratulations, Jan Perry, on that honor.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Labange?
Congratulations, Ms. Perry. Thank you. Last night, we kicked off Brit Week, which is an effort by the British community in Los Angeles, the arts, entertainment, biotech, film community, and to celebrate the contributions of Brits who live in Los Angeles and engage. In addition to that, there'll be many events. Go to britweek.com. Thank you.
Thank you. And we'll send forth with on four without objection, Ms. Hahn.
I hate to just pile on the honors, but tonight, our colleague, Councilwoman Perry, is also being honored with the Kenneth Hahn Service Award at the annual Century Housing Awards Dinner tonight for her work with affordable housing in our city. So the honors just keep piling on, and you're certainly deserving of every one of them. I'm going to be able to come tonight and help to present that award.
To talk about your father, Kenneth Hahn, and to take a little time to talk about his legacy, and there's no more fitting person to do that than you. Thank you.
There's no prize like a Hahn Prize. Yes, Mr. Cardenas.
Standing, it's the most prestigious award in all of L.A. County, Kenneth Hahn. That's what I've heard. Absolutely.
Are there any other announcements?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Cardenas.
I'd just like to piggyback on what I said, mentioned yesterday about all the hard work that a lot of our staff and a lot of us do, missing birthdays, missing all kinds of personal events because of our dedication to work. But also, at the same time, I mentioned about how my daughter went through oral surgery. She's fine. She went through it on Friday, and I'm texting my wife, "How is she? How is she? How is she?" But my point is, I was texting my wife. Here I am at work, she's there with my daughter, not asking anything of me, not asking me why I'm not there, what have you, just understanding that I have other obligations as well. So I just wanted to also mention all of those people who do cover and care for us and do all kinds of things, and they get used to. They get used to the fact that we tend to work more than 40 hours a week, and we do tend to work through birthdays and other events that a lot of people take for granted. So I just wanted to take the time to thank my wife and all the wives and husbands and all the loved ones who actually put up with this kind of lifestyle and actually make us able to continue to have this lifestyle where we're pulled away from our families and pulled away from a lot of personal things that people take for granted. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Any other announcements? If not, can we please rise for adjourning motions? Can I ask everybody in chambers to please rise for our adjourning motions?
Colleagues, I want to adjourn today in the memory of really a very dear friend of mine, Suzanne Dillard, who passed away on April 17th, in my opinion, way too young. She leaves her wonderful husband, Warren, and her son Blake, and a sister, Sally Henderson of College Station, Texas. Suzanne taught in the Beverly Hills schools. She later became a talented actress and interior designer. Her life was largely devoted to charities for youth. She served on boards and as president of the National Art Association, Achievement Rewards for college scientists, Footlighters, Freedoms Foundation at Valley Forge, the League for Children. She was with the Associated Women for Pepperdine. She was a member of the Delta 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 Sorority and Pepperdine Center for the Arts. Suzanne and her husband, Warren, were longtime friends of my family. We went to church together for many, many years. Suzanne was always giving her life and her passion, her energy to so many good projects, but they will always, Suzanne will always really be known for her work with Pepperdine University, and they're asking that in lieu of flowers, that a donation be sent to the Center for the Arts at Pepperdine. Her service is at 12:30 today at Forest Salon Hollywood Hills, and I'm going to be going, but I appreciate you letting me adjourn on her honor. She was a wonderful woman and left an impact, I think, on probably everybody she ever touched or met. We will miss Suzanne tremendously.
Thank you, Ms. Hahn. Other adjourning motions? Ms. Perry?
Mr. Zine, Mr. Parks and I wanted to rise and ask all of you to join us in remembering Dr. Dorothy Height, who died at the age of 98 years, and she was the queen mother of the civil rights movement for seven decades, and also one of the founding mothers of the sorority known as Delta Sigma Theta. She was an advocate for racial equality and gender equality, and her long life included 41 years as president of the National Council of Negro Women. She was born in 1912 in Richmond, Virginia, grew up in Rankin, Pennsylvania, and she was a top student, and she was, in particular, a great orator. She graduated from high school and was accepted into Barnard College in New York, but she had to delay her entrance a year because the school had met its quota of two African-American students. Instead, she attended New York University, which had no quota, and in four years, she earned a bachelor's and a master's degree in social work. She was a strong female presence in the civil rights movement. She was often only the only woman at strategy meetings with Dr. Reverend Martin Luther King Jr. and other leaders, and she was a determined and consistent voice, impressing the importance of issues affecting women and children, such as childcare and education. As president of the National Council of Negro Women from 1957 to 1998, she led a group, she led the group to expand its mission in training thousands of women, homemakers, teachers, office workers, students, to work as community advocates. And one of her most visible accomplishments that reigns today is the Black Family Reunion Celebration, a three-day cultural event in Washington, D.C., with related events around the country, and it was founded with her vision to counter negative images of the African-American family, and it has been held annually since 1986.
In 2004, President Bush awarded Dr. Height the Congressional Gold Medal. For her many decades of service, President Clinton awarded her the Presidential Medal of Freedom. Also, 75 years later, after turning her way from Bernard College, designated her an honorary graduate. Dr. Height had a strong presence in civil rights movement and be greatly missed by all who knew her. Survived by her sister, Antoinette Aldridge's nephew, William Briggs II, a lawyer, entertainment lawyer, who escorted her to the inaugural of President Obama. Also, attorney Briggs lives in Council District 12, works in Council District 5, and is a law partner with radio personality Kevin James. May she rest in peace.
Thank you. Second from Ms. Hahn. Any other adjourning motions? Ms. Hahn, yeah, of course.
I was obviously honored to have met Dr. Height on several occasions here in Los Angeles, and I was listening to stories about her yesterday, and she obviously was credited with really being one of the greater advocates for Dr. King. In fact, on his, the day of the "I Have a Dream" speech on the Washington Mall, she was credited with organizing the program so that he was actually the very last speaker that day, because she felt if he was that last voice, that last speech, that what he was going to say would clearly be remembered, and that, of course, was true. And it was interesting, because she always talked about not being able to separate the discriminations, you know, of not only being, you know, the daughter of slaves, but also being a woman. She felt like the discriminations and the obstacles sort of were not able to be separated for her, and I thought that was very powerful.
Thank you.
We'll miss her.
And no other adjourning motions? Madam Clerk?
President, we have our members on the table.
Sure, we'll put all members on that.
Thank you.
And we have no other adjourning motions, so if you please call the roll. This meeting of the Los Angeles City Council is adjourned. Will be next in session on Friday.